The April 12, 2021 Regular Wassilla City Council Meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business to attend during the meeting, please move for a recess. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Bernie?
Here.
Councilmember Vlach?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Rousa is absent this evening due to a family emergency. Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum with Councilmembers Johnson and Brown with us in person. Councilmembers Bernie Vlach and Harvey participating telephonically.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Brown, would you lead us, please?
Yes, Mayor. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. Next on the agenda is special orders of the day. There she is. There's one proclamation which I will read. City of Wassilla Proclamation Recognizing National Telecommunicators Week, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our emergency medical service responders, police officers, and firefighters are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the MACOM Public Safety Dispatch Center, and whereas public safety dispatchers through the 911 system are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety dispatches are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety dispatch of MACOM dispatch have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and the public safety system simply would not work without them, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and 365 days a year. Now therefore, I, Glendy Ledford, Mayor of Wassilla, hereby proclaim April 11, 2021 through April 17 as National Telecommunicators Week in the city of Wassilla in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, dated the 12th day of April, 2021. Millie Avletta, would you come forward, please?
It is my pleasure and great honor to present you with this proclamation.
Next on the agenda is Commission and Agency Reports. Mr. Giddings, you're first.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The airshow committee met last week, and they'll continue to meet. The next meeting is on the 20th of this month. They're refining their program and fundraising efforts, so no big news, but everything's going forward.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for Mr. Giddings?
Yes, could you please repeat the date of the airshow, please?
Yeah, it's the weekend of June 13. I think that's the Saturday.
Okay, any other questions? Up next is a report from Wassilla High School. Would you please come forward and state your name?
Hi, my name is Jordan Harris, and I'm junior class president at Wassilla High. At Wassilla High, we successfully helped to host ASAA state basketball tournaments, and all spring sports are functioning. Wrestling had several meets, softball, baseball, and soccer have games this week. We are also hosting solo ensemble tomorrow, and spring OSOG will be held this weekend through Zoom. Our leadership class also put on a school scavenger hunt between the classes, which the seniors won, and in a month, we have graduation.
Okay, thank you. Does any of the council have any questions? Hearing none, thank you so much. So we are to 6.3, the physical year 2022 budget presentation. Finance Director Troy Tankersley.
Mayor, for the record, this is Troy Tankersley, Finance Director. It's my pleasure to present to you the FY '22 supplemental budget. This is the second year of the biennial budget.
(Laughter).
I don't know how that happened. We have three new council members, and so with that, the other three council members have probably seen this presentation before, you know, like usual, the numbers change, the slides don't, kind of thing. So if there's any questions that you have throughout the slide, please, you can interrupt me, and definitely entertain the questions. This presentation is to overview, this is kind of the agenda, kind of the 50,000-foot level, if you will, without getting into details, as those work sessions will be coming down at a later date. So with this agenda, we're talking about the mission of the city, how the budget supports that mission, some budget premises, those things that aided in putting this budget together, some core contract service changes, that kind of thing, a few highlights, and then specifically to the general fund, special revenue fund, and enterprise funds. So it's the mission of the city of Wassilla to provide optimum service levels to the public as cost-effectively as possible, to ensure a stable and thriving economy, promote healthy community, provide a safe environment and quality lifestyle, promote maximum citizen With that in mind, one of the goals, goal number one set by council, was to pass a sustainable budget in which operating expenditures don't exceed operating revenue. And as you can see, that this budget does not do that. We have a net operating plus, if you will, of $3.5 million. Secondly, we have to look at what a balanced budget is, and a balanced budget simply is that expenditures don't go in excess of revenue, and if they do, then that means we appropriate fund balance or net assets to balance that budget. And in this year, even though we had $3.5 million of operating, we're actually appropriating 4.7 million, almost 4.8 million in capital outlay, which is giving that 1.2 million appropriation of fund balance. And that's actually made up of three areas. It's about 787,000 of general fund, fund balance, 430,000 in the enterprise funds, and 11,000 in special revenue funds, and we'll touch on those a little bit later as we go. Additionally, with that goal number two, it says that the city will maintain and improve existing services. And as you remember, in December of 19, when the sales tax increased from 2% to 2.5%, that additional half percent, we said to the taxpayers that that is to fund public safety, to include both MACOM and the new public safety center, if you will, the garage we've added, the operations of the library. And additionally, we have growth as the city's growing, and with that, there's 2.5 additional positions being proposed. One of them's a full-time mechanic out at PD for the garage, one of them's a full-time IT manager, and the other one is to increase the current part-time museum aid to a full-time. Goal number three said that we would maintain zero mill levy, and once again, this budget does that. And to equate that, using a 2-mill cap, that equates about $2.8 million that is saved by the city residents. Some of the general highlights is that the population of the city will be about 8,900 in 2021, followed by 108,000 in the Matsu Borough, and I threw in the 20 estimates that were there prior. It's about a 2% increase year over year. Although COVID and the changes that we're seeing, and, you know, that 2% isn't always accurate, as we noticed. Additional, code says that we'll use CPI for wage growth, and so the three-year average CPI would be 1.1%. And I'll talk a little bit about more of that in a little bit as well. Revenue premises, sales tax obviously is our primary source of revenue, and this is a very conservative approach this year. With the growth of the sales tax that we've had, what we've seen, and what I've reported to council and administration, this is a 2.49% increase that I've used. It's about 443,000. Those negative signs, those parentheses, actually shouldn't be negative, they should be positive, so I apologize for that. Additional to that is federal revenue is, there's actually none, other than the 150,000 that's being projected for an airport capital project. These two graphs here, the upper-left graph shows you the sales tax revenue as it relates to population, and you can clearly see that the bottom line, the purple line, is the city resident population, whereas the red line is borough resident population. So it's clear that the city definitely gains by the overall Matsu Borough population with the city of Wassilla being the retail hub. The bottom graph is really a depiction of actual to budget comparison as it relates to sales tax, and we can clearly see that growth as well. Intergovernmental revenue, which is between the governmental funds only, it's going to decrease slightly, and when I say slightly, it's about 40,000 to 60,000. It's not overly material. Municipal assistance would be about 117,000. However, there's talk again that, you know, in future years, the municipal assistance is going to go away, and most municipalities were no exception. We continually fight to maintain the municipal assistance from the state. User fee revenue, it's going to be pretty much flat, and that's primarily caused because of the sports complex. The sports complex, when you look at last year and prior to FY '20, the city's lost about $300,000 in revenue, and because of that loss, we've had to realign the revenue projection for the sports complex. And so you'll see an additional increase in transfer to the sports complex because of that, and as long as the sports complex continues to reestablish those existing contracts and contracts they've had in the past, and I believe, and that they will, that revenue needs to be subsidized as going forward. Local and other revenue, that's primarily your DPS contracts, 511, Chickaloon, those kind of things. That makes up about 72% of the dispatch expenditures. So overall, operations are going to increase about 308,000, which is about 4.54% growth to about 7.1 million. The city administers three union contracts, local 302, 341, WPDA, the police department, and then we have the non-represented. And the average salary increase associated to this budget is between 2% and 4.5%. Now, pause here for a second because I want to talk about that CPI of 1.1 as it relates to this. When we talk about the three union contracts, 302, 341, WPDA, those contracts specifically call for a 2%, excuse me, a 2% CPI, followed by anywhere between 2% to 2.5% step. So that leaves the non-represented. Under code, non-represented would only get a 1.1. The proposed budget here equates that CPI to equal that of the other union contracts. So it's being used at 2%. And then the non-reps are between 2.25 and 2.5 on the steps. So that way, all four groupings, if you will, are equated. Personnel costs overall will increase 2.17 to 374,000, is what that equates to. The wages side is 193,000, the benefits side is 180,000. Health insurance, the union contracts are set that they can't go in excess of 8%. If they do, then employees contribute above that. Those rates are starting to show up. It's encouraging. I don't anticipate going beyond 8%. So I don't have the actuals to do any adjustments at this point, so the 8% will stand for now. PERS still at 22%. I haven't heard any more conversation in the legislature as far as a possibility of increasing that, but that's always something that we watch. And I know in prior years, they talked about increasing it to 24. And then fiscal policies associated 22. So the city's goal is to pay for all reoccurring expenditures with reoccurring revenues. We also, the individual departments submit their budgets on basic assumption that the council will always maintain the current tax rate, and the budget's reviewed by administration and council, and they'll focus on that concept of staff economy and then capital construction.
Madam Mayor?
Excuse me?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, it's Councilman Bernie.
Yes, sir.
If I could, if I could ask Mr. Tankersley to expand on PERS a little bit?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
He would like for you to expand on PERS.
Is there a specific question, Councilman Bernie, or?
No, I just, it's one thing we've always been worried about, right? So do you have any opinions on it, or?
Well, other than to say that I haven't seen any bills or conversations, and even with my colleagues, we haven't seen anything to alarm us that the state's looking to increase that, at least not this year. You know, we watch it every year, right? So we've seen, I think, what was it, two to four years ago is when they went after the 24%, which is pretty sizable for us. So, we watch that every year.
All right, thank you.
What I can say is the 22%, as I've noted, equates to about $2.3 million of city contribution, and that's not the employee side, that's the city side.
A big number.
I think I left off with the policies of program expansions, those requirements, how they're submitted to the budget. New programs are the same, a little bit more in-depth. Existing programs are justified, and administrative costs, overhead costs are kept to a minimum. All four of these are reviewed administratively as we go through the mayor's review by departments. And then the city will integrate performance measures and productivity indicators to the budget. We do that as it relates to council goals, not required necessarily in the supplemental budget, definitely required in the biennial budget. We did do it in this budget, though. The city maintains a positive unassigned fund balance in all the governmental funds, and that's the general fund, special revenue funds, debt service, capital projects, and that's really to establish those operating costs and whatnot. That's an accounting requirement as well. And stabilization of funds in the code specific to the general fund says it will maintain 50% to 60% of the expenditures in fund balance, and that's really to maintain a six-month reserve should things really go south. And proudly, we, year over year, we maintain that, and as a matter of fact, we maintain it at the high level of 60%. Yeah, I think you heard Sam Thompson from BDO talk about that, has a very fiscal prudent approach to our fund balance. The FY '22 targeted unassigned fund balance then will be between 8.2 and 9.8 million, and it will be set at the maximum. And in the general fund, as I stated, we're proposing to consume 787,000 of fund balance. The graph for the general fund unassigned fund balance, those lines, the upper line represents the max of 60%, at the lower line, the 50%, the dark blue is the unassigned fund balance, and so you can see year over year how that has equated both budgetarily With the following departments with contract service additions, in public safety, the garage is a new department that was completed, so we're proposing to put a mechanic in there. However, the total budget is proposed at 150,000. And the code compliance division of public safety has been moved out of public safety and moved into general government, and you can see the costs related to that. So in general government, we're also adding an IT manager, and then, like I mentioned, code compliance then moves over to general government as well. And in culture and rec, as I stated, increase in the museum aid from part-time to full-time.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Vlach.
And to Mr. Tankersley, is it possible to see the justification that was used for the new full-time position, you know, the mechanic and the IT manager and upgrading that museum aid to a full-time?
Yeah, we can get you some...
Oh, okay. And also, the code compliance move from under what the police department, under public works, was there justification that was given to the union to allow that to become a non-represented position?
Absolutely. That was a conversation between administration and the union, and the previous position that was held, the employee had retired vacating code compliance, administration and WPDA had conversation, negotiated that out to make it a non-union position, thus creating it into general government.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious. That's kind of surprising. They typically don't like to give that position, so I was curious. And maybe before we go into the budget in a couple of days, we could look at the justification for the new position?
Absolutely. That'd be my suggestion as well, is when we go into the departments, we can certainly discuss those then.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, so after that, so additionally, in the capital improvement fund, we're appropriating $1 million for the road paving. And so the operating budget highlights, as you can see, is using $24.7 million. And as far as the percentage goes, and you could probably, in the next graph, that'll be displayed, these percentages are pretty consistent year over year. They might fluctuate a little bit, but they're very consistent looking back. So as we can see, sales tax being 63%, 64% of overall total revenue. Again, all those revenue streams are very consistent over the prior years. And under expenditures, likewise, public safety being the largest, not a surprise, and again, very consistent for the city. Moving into the general fund a little bit, the general fund is appropriating $24.6 million, and that includes over $4 million of transfers, and we'll talk about the transfers a little bit as we move down to the next slide. But what's important is sales tax is 76% of our revenue stream. So obviously, we're very protective of it, we obviously scrutinize it. With COVID, however, our auditor hasn't been able to get out and audit, but it is nice to note that the online system that the city's implemented is going strong, it's well-received, and so that continues to add to a reduction in expense, both in postage and envelopes and the like, and so we're tracking that. I don't have the numbers with me, and in this budget, this budget actually budgets, as we get into my budget, actually maintains those budget expenditures because it's so new, we don't... because it's so new, we don't have what that's going to be. And we'll talk more when we get into my budget specifically. Uh, you can see the varying sources of general fund revenue. The 18 million being sales tax. The 76% of this graph reflecting sales tax, and again, that's very consistent for prior years. And this is, uh, the expenditure summary for the varying, um, divisions and departments, um, breaks it down by percentage and what those increases are, um, and, and the changes. The one at the bottom for non-departmental and transfers, that increased 619. That's an increase of 400,000 to the sports complex. Um, and I think it's, no, it's not next slide. We'll get to the transfers here, and I'll, I'll break that down a little bit more. Yeah, right here, so this, uh, the graph, um, slide 25, uh, for those online, you can see with the Curtis Menard Sports Center where we have 605,000 going to operations. Last year, when we projected the FY '22 plan, we were only looking at, um, I think it was about 400,000 in a transfer. Because of the growth of the sports complex and, and what's been going on year over year, because of COVID and the reduction and the realignment of revenues, we've had to change that. Additionally, we've got a little bit more in capital expenditures than normal. And there's a proposal for, um, a pavilion going on out there to fund that as well. So we have $900,000 needed out there. Um, so we've got an increase of a half a million dollars adding to that transfer line, which then adds to the consumption of fund balance out of the general fund. Likewise, the road CIP fund has got that million and 60s, so you can see that million dollars when in prior years, it's not near that million dollars. So that too adds to the consumption of the 700,000 in fund balance. Expenditure breakdowns, um, again, there's nothing, um, in these two graphs that's alarming to me. Uh, they're very, they're very, uh, consistent with prior years. Public safety being 53%, very consistent. Then moving into the special revenue fund. Now, special revenue fund consists of the youth court, we have two asset forfeiture, state and federal, and then the CARES Act. The CARES Act, by definition, um, the auditors, we have to put that in a special revenue fund. So we had to make that, um, a special revenue fund. When we appropriated that money, it's in the capital improvement fund. So at year-end, we make those adjustments for financial statement purposes. So in this budget, you will see the fund for the CARES Act, because I need to report that. But there's no budget associated to it. It's still, it's still all part of, um, the capital improvement fund. So the youth court receives, um, approximately 77,000 in contributions from varying sources. And we plan to spend about 86,000 in expenditures. So we're going to consume about 11,000 of its fund balance. And this, this is normal for the youth court. Um, and as the fund balance drains down, we oftentimes either encourage youth court to drum up, um, donations, that kind of thing, or we ask for the borough's assistance for further contribution. Moving into the enterprise fund. We're going to, it's about 6.2 million in operating expense, or appropriations, I should say. In this one, there's three arrows, and the very top arrow, um, I'm somewhat excited about, um, because it represents 503,000 in debt service payment out of the water fund. This represents the final payment in, as a matter of fact, for the entire city for debt service. So the city can really say, we're debt-free once that's made. The second arrow below that is a, is a pointer to say that we establish 50% stabilization in the enterprise funds. And again, we consistently do that as well. And on top of that, that third arrow, it's always a positive net asset balance.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Harvey, I just was curious, do we know exactly or approximately when that debt service payment will be made?
Well, the payment's actually scheduled in March of each year. So it'd be March of '22.
All right, thank you.
Um, the graph here is net position versus benchmark. The city currently uses a 10% benchmark as it relates, um, to its net position, um, for unrestricted funding. This is used in case, uh, a pipe blows or something like that. What you're seeing, however, um, as these funds are increasing, and in comparison to other utilities, is more of a 20% um, unrestricted balance. And it, it makes sense when you think about it because of the cost of the pipe, the cost of labor, everything's going up. And so what you're seeing is more between 15 and 20, more like 20% is, seems to be the fiscal benchmark now, um, in, in these utility funds. And just for, um, notation, I believe the, um, yeah, the water fund is about just under 16% and the sewer fund's just a hair over 10 right now. And Mike, I was referring to, under debt service, uh, this is the principal payment, the 496,350. Now although the rate is only a point and a half, that equates to about a 7.4, um, excuse me, 7,400 dollar savings of interest, that's not a lot of money for the city. Um, I think at this point, it's more principal than anything else, and the fund can certainly sustain it. Under the capital improvement fund, again, it's reflecting, uh, four years, even though we have a five-year plan. We update that five-year plan, um, at the biannual budget level. In '22, we're proposing 4.6 million, excuse me, 4.7 million dollars, um, in capital projects, and that listing for the, all the capital projects can be found in the budget under those, those pages. And we'll definitely get into those during the, uh, department reviews. And that concludes it, Mayor. If there's any questions from council?
Okay, um, hearing none. We will go to, next on the agenda is a public hearing on resolution serial number 21-06. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the resolution.
Thank you, that's approving the issuance by the Public Finance Authority of its revenue bonds Goodwill Industries of Lane and South Coast Counties Project, series 2021, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $7 million.
Good evening. It is 6:39 PM on Monday, April 12, 2021. This is the time for the public hearing on the $7 million revenue bonds Goodwill Industry of Lane and South Coast Counties Project, series 2021. The bonds are being issued by a public authority out of Wisconsin for purposes of financing or refinancing the acquisition of the real property and improvements located at 751 East Palmer-Wassilla Highway, Wassilla, Alaska 99654, consisting of an existing 25,000-square-foot commercial building, the facility. Number two is funding certain capital improvements to the facility. Number three is funding any required reserve bond, funds for the bonds. Number four, paying certain cost of issuing the bonds, which is the project. Because the project facility is located in the city, and even though the city is not issuing the bonds for the transaction, it is a host jurisdiction and is therefore required to approve the transaction under the Tax, Equity and Physical Responsibility Act, or TEFRA. This approval is solely for the purpose of satisfying the TEFRA public approval requirement. It has no other purposes or effect. The approval does not make the city liable or responsible for payment on the bonds or for the project facility. The city council is conducting this hearing to take testimony from the public on the bonds and the project. After hearing any public testimony, the city council will determine whether to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of the bonds by the public authority. Are there any members of the public who wish to give testimony regarding the bonds or the project? I now close the public hearing at 6:42 PM. Is there a motion to adopt resolution serial number 20-06?
Councilmember Johnson moves to approve, um, resolution 2021.
Councilmember Brown.
It has been moved by Councilmember Johnson and secreted by Councilmember, uh, Bernie to adopt resolution serial number 2106. Is there any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I was just wondering if there were any of the involved parties here tonight that would like to speak on this at all?
Uh, we have attorneys on the phone, um.
And Mayor, I just want to let you know that, uh, Michael Schwartz, my colleague, is on the phone. While we don't, while we represent the city and we're just here to assist with the TEFA hearing, which didn't require much assistance, it turns out he is there. So if there are specific questions that anybody has.
Mr. Schwartz, would you like to speak to this?
Sorry, I just had to unmute my phone, I apologize. Well, I don't, I don't have anything other than to say what you had mentioned before that, you know, this is solely an agreement to satisfy the requirements of TEFA. Um, the city won't be obligated on any of the bonds, or, um, so John Self is here. John Self is, is with Wells Fargo, um, and he's involved in the financing. In case anyone has any questions about the project, he has a little bit more knowledge about it.
Mr. Self, would you like to?
Thanks, ma'am. Oh, good evening, uh, thank you very much. No, I, you guys, I mean, it's just that meeting a requirement, right, Mike? Necessary to facilitate this for the public authority to finish up the project and for the goodwill folks for the project in Wassilla itself. Clip. I appreciate it, one's up.
Mr. Brown?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure this doesn't obligate the city with any consideration from the planning department as this project goes forward.
No, no, it does not. It's, it, it, that is completely separate from this.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, this property, what we're talking about acquiring is with former Johnson's hire, is it still correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
Yes, Councilmember, uh, Madam Mayor, so I understand then that we have no obligation. Is this also then, we're not really endorsing the bonds either? We're just, uh, making a mechanism so that they could be procured? Is that correct?
Correct, correct. That's a fair way to characterize it. Very well worded.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of resolution serial number 21-06.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Bernie?
Yes.
Veloc? Ms. Veloc?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Resolution serial number 2106 passes unanimously with councilmembers Johnson, Bernie, Veloc, Brown, and Harvey in support. Councilmember Rousa is absent and excused.
There are no other items scheduled for public hearing, so next on the agenda is persons to be heard. Eileen Falkenstein.
John Self?
I've left.
Eileen Falkenstein with Wassilla Area Seniors. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Good news, it appears that Willow House, our new housing facility for seniors, is slated to begin accepting applications for occupancy in May, and hopefully opening in November. That will be affordable housing for seniors in the area. And if you have, know of anyone that's interested or needs that housing, they can contact, uh, Wassilla Area Seniors to get more information on that. We are, right now, our home-delivered meals department is delivering upwards of 270 meals daily to our senior community. And the good news is that with the state CARES Act grant funding, Wasi will be purchasing two new all-wheel-drive Subaru Foresters to add to the existing fleet to help get these meals out to the seniors in the community. And we also have meals available at the Senior Center as always. We also have our, um, house cleaning and chore services for seniors. And tomorrow is our quarterly membership meeting. It takes place at 12:45 at the Senior Center, and we will be serving pizza for lunch, if you're interested in attending. We will be having our Mouse for Meals fundraiser in June, and there will be more information as that happens. There will be asylum auction accompanying it this year, and it will be both virtual and in-person. And that sums it up pretty much for this month for the Senior Center.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
And next is Jessica.
Good evening, I am Jessica Vera, the executive director of the Greater Wassilla Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we are super excited to be going back to in-person luncheons beginning tomorrow. Um, we invite all of you to join us if you'd like. We still have a few seats available. Um, if you'd like to let us know, you can put your name on the list for that. Um, we do meet every Tuesday from noon to 1 PM, and we will begin meeting here, um, at Evangelos in Wassilla, starting tomorrow. Um, our speaker tomorrow is state economist Neil Freed, who's always, you know, a hoot and gives us great information on what's going on with our local economy. And then our 25th anniversary military appreciation lunch will be held May 25th out at Settlers Bay Golf Course. And this is a great annual event that honors our past, present, and future military here in the valley. Our tickets for that will go on sale in late April. And we are also hosting a spring raffle to help fund that event for, so we can put on a good one since it's our anniversary event. Um, and if you're interested in those, I can get you information afterwards, just let me know. And if you're interested in those, I can get you information afterwards, just let me know. And we have been seeing an uptick in visitor information requests and walk-ins to our office looking for information for visiting friends and family for this year. So we're really looking forward to a return of summer tourist season. It looks a little closer to normal than we got last year. But we're very optimistic based on the information requests that are coming through currently. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have one question, Jessica. So have you moved back into the depot yet?
We are still in the old Dorothy Page Museum.
I see.
I think Archie would have to give you the most current update on where we're at with potentially moving back to the depot. We're excited to move back to the depot, too, eventually.
Thank you.
Archie, would you like to give update on that, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the last piece of the puzzle, as far as the project goes, is MTA and getting all the data and phones connected and converted over.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Here in none, Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have the special meeting minutes of March 18, 2021, and the regular meeting minutes of March 22, 2021. We have one introduction with the recommended public hearing date of April 26, 2021. That's ordinance serial number 2107, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget by appropriating $11,793 to the General Fund Recreational Services Department from the General Fund fund balance for fiscal year 2021 airshow. We have our next introduction with two public hearing dates. The first on April 26, 2021. And that's my bad. The second on April 28, 2021, and that's ordinance serial number 2121, providing for the adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 2022 and appropriating funds to carry out said budget. We have no resolutions for approval under our consent agenda, two action memorandums. The first is AM number 2119, contract extension to Tech Pro in the amount of $99,043 for the Spruce Avenue Wellhouse upgrades electrical services. And the second, AM number 2120, contract extension to Wheaton Wells in the amount of $50,157 for the Spruce Avenue Wellhouse upgrades well services.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, I move we accept it.
Is there a second?
Councilmember Brown, second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Brown to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any objection to the motion? Here in none, the motion is approved. There's no unfinished business this evening. Madam Clerk, please read the next item of business.
Thank you. That's an update from administration on emergency response efforts related to COVID-19.
There has been no new action taken on COVID-19. So your communications, Madam Clerk, please read the title of the IM under communications.
Thank you. That's informing the city council of the revised road paving program for fiscal year 2022, based on council action and direction from the March 22, 2021 regular city council meeting.
Are there any questions from the council? Next on the agenda is audience comment. Anyone in the audience? Mr. Graham? Me too! There is no commission minutes. Yes, ma'am. Would you please come back and state your name?
Eileen Falkenstein. This is on a personal note. As a community member, I think it's a great thing that you do. The council members, the city administrators, take good care of the residents of the city. And it's truly appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am. So nobody in the audience wants to speak. So next on the agenda, Madam Clerk, your comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to the council, we'll see you back here day after tomorrow, Wednesday, 6 o'clock. No, you won't. That's the start of our budget presentations from departments. So you all have your budget books that were distributed to you this evening. Inside the front pocket, you see a table here. It gives page numbers, the departments we're going to be reviewing, both in paper and then your electronic copy. And then also you have a memo from me on top with your budget amendment forms. So if you have any questions on that, please let me know. And that is, one more quick thing, you received a couple emails from me through our HR department for some training. That training is due by April 30. And if all council members would be so kind as to participate, that saves the city, ultimately the taxpayers, some dollars on our public entity insurance premium. So thank you for that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Attorney?
I have no comments this evening.
Okay. I know I have introduced Crystal Nygaard, the Deputy Administrator, to you before. But Crystal, would you like to tell the people a little bit about yourself?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to serve on this administration. I come from the private sector, a very strong advocate of the private sector, and a champion for small business and government to work as partners. I know that the mayor's focused on economic development and engaging both the private and the public sector in developing our economy in a very balanced manner. She's also tasked us with engaging with our policymakers to advocate for policies that help our economy grow and also help us stay a champion as the fastest-growing place in the state. So I look forward to working with everybody and be patient as I drink out of this fire hose called government. And I promise I won't go too far out of the box. So thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Councilmember Johnson? Yeah, that's you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand. Thank you, Troy, after his leave, for the very good introduction to the budget. I really appreciate the time you spent putting that together and going over it. I do have one concern. I've been following our COVID-19 testing positive numbers along with our vaccine inoculation. I'm a little bit discouraged on the latter in that if you actually look at our state's ranking, we're at about the bottom. I think we're the second to the bottom in terms of the amount of vaccines which have actually been given. In terms of the state, we were at 21% or something like that, whereas Anchorage was close to 30, and other communities were at 40 to 50. So we in the valley here, I think, we tend to have a go-it-alone, don't-tell-me-what-to-do government. But on the other hand, if you actually look at the efficacy of the vaccines, you also see that we in the Matsu Regional are still probably leading in terms of the percentage of active vaccine finds. We need to get the word out, get vaccinated. It is effective, it will work, it will stop this curse on us. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Viallak?
Uh, no comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Harvey?
No comments.
Councilmember Brown?
Ditto what Mr. Johnson just said, and no other comments.
Councilmember Bernie?
No comments.
Okay, my turn. Like Councilmember Brown and Johnson, I wish everybody to go get vaccinated, but it's not my job to tell them to do that. So I can tell you that I have been vaccinated and we have a high percentage of city employees that have also been vaccinated. So Troy, do you have a, a number?
Out of 136 employees, we're at 35% vaccinated.
Thank you. So having said that, all you can do is say, okay, this is my experience, this is what I've done, and let's, let's all strive to make our community a better place and a safer place. So, and Troy, thank you for the presentation on the budget. And we will be here Wednesday night to start the whole process. So everybody have a good evening. We are adjourned at 7 PM.